The mic will actually pick you up.
You're good to go, Karen.
Okay. I'm gonna jump into the middle here. Um, okay, you've been in Oregon City for how long?
Three years.
Okay. Uh, what do you feel that the city's greatest parks and recreation deficiencies or needs are?
Well, uh, I will speak from my experience working down in Arizona for the Parks and Recreation Department in Peoria. Um, I'm not exactly sure what all the, the, the needs are for the city, but I know that, uh, in Arizona, our needs were always budgetary. And trying to find the source of money to do the necessary maintenance and the necessary improvements and, and what have you to our parks and trails. And I suspect it's probably very similar, uh, here that, uh, that's, that's probably a, a major concern is making sure that your facilities are up to date and well-maintained and, and that you can sufficiently add, uh, add things as, as the needs are. Uh, and I suspect the other thing, I, I'm, uh, I'm becoming aware, uh, that there is a large discussion about homelessness in Oregon. And I know we had, again, referring back to my experience in, in Arizona, we had, um, some issues with homelessness, especially where we had, uh, river trails and, uh, uh, restroom facilities near the river trails and probably weren't as tolerant down in Arizona as I think that they are here in Oregon City towards the homeless. But, uh, you know, that was a, it was, it's a, it's a part of the population that we had to deal with, and I'm sure that that's, uh, probably something that's, uh, uh, in your, your area as well. Beyond that, I, I think, uh, one of the things that I'm most interested in is, uh, multi-generational use of parks, uh, system. Um, we were trying very hard when I left, uh, Peoria to, uh, find ways to get the seniors more active in our park system. We were, we've done it. We did a very good job, and I suspect you have here as well, uh, in Oregon City, at least the parks that I've been to, I, you know, there's, uh, the kids seem to be utilizing the playgrounds and what have you, but, uh, there's always opportunity, I think, to look at the underserved populations and how we can best get them to the parks and, uh, uh, make it accessible for everybody and useful for everybody. Um, being that I'm a senior citizen now, that seems to be something that is, uh, of, of primary interest, uh, didn't used to be, but now it's kind of a major interest of mine is to, to see that, uh, there's opportunities for seniors to get exercise and, and, uh, be able to utilize the park as well. I, I think, um, you have pickleball, right? Yeah, I know, that was, that was huge, uh, down in Arizona. Uh, we didn't, uh, yet have many facilities for that, but things along that nature, I think, are very useful to creating a, a multi-generational, uh, use for the parks. So, I'm not sure that I answered your question, uh, from an Oregon City standpoint, but it's, it's kind of the things that I think are probably on your, your topic list, I would imagine.
You said you've been here three years?
Three years, yes.
And you mentioned Arizona, is that where you came directly?
Yeah, I, I worked for the city of Peoria Parks and Rec for 12 years. I was a landscape architect.
That was my next question, the connection you had had.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I was responsible for, uh, developing new parks, maintaining existing parks. Uh, I did the Trails Master Plan, the Open Space Master Plan. Um, we, uh, created our first two community parks, uh, while I was there, was working on the design with our, uh, our contractors, our design consultants, um, and then involved in the construction of neighborhood parks and community parks and, and what have you. And also, we had, uh, uh, not unlike Oregon City, we discovered, uh, after I'd been there a couple of years, that we had a significant historic, uh, factor that we hadn't really taken advantage of at Peoria. Some of the old town, uh, uh, thank you, some of the old town buildings, uh, that had been ignored were suddenly, uh, made interested in, in terms of historic, uh, capacity. We discovered we had a tremendous amount of, uh, Indian, uh, archaeological sites, and so we developed an archaeological master plan and created a historic, uh, commission while I was there during the 12 years. So, uh, very multi-dimensional, uh, experience, uh, at, at the city and, uh, very enjoyable as well.
So, um, many times people leave Oregon to go to Arizona for retirement.
I know.
So...
Grandkids.
You've come to enjoy the rain in your later years.
Grandkids.
All grandkids, well, that's, that's the other part of that. The weather doesn't matter at that point, does it?
My daughter moved up here three years ago. We'd actually lived here in the 90s for four years. Uh, I was married then, and my wife at the time had seasonal depression syndrome, so we had to go back to Arizona.
Yeah, tough here for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
It was, uh, it was really hard on her. But my daughter, uh, always maintained a love for Oregon, so, uh, she'd always had it in mind to, to go back, and so she moved up here three years ago, and, and they started in on me, "Dad, you gotta move up, you gotta move up." So, I finally bent the bolt and came up.
Well, thank you very much. Well, it's obvious you've had some public speaking experience in the past, uh, with the, what you're doing, what you had done with, uh, master planning and working with the city closely. Um, two questions, and one is, an easy one to answer, you realize that we meet on, on the, um, uh, the fourth Thursday of each month. Is that gonna be a problem for you to make that commitment?
No.
Um, also, um, and it was sort of alluded to, I don't know, after being here three years, say that again? Oh, yeah. And, and, so you've already alluded to it, um, your current strengths, uh, we, um, is there anything you wanted to really tell us about yourself that's related to what you wanna do here for us and, uh?
Sure.
You know, would you expand on that?
Um, I was, you know, I, I've been a landscape architect since, uh, I think it was 1996 was when I got my registration, and I got, uh, deeply involved in the, uh, American Association of Landscape Architects, was, uh, president of the chapter in Arizona, uh, for a couple of years, and trustee for a couple of years. Um, and really did a lot of, uh, public speaking on behalf of the organization, went to Washington for several lobby day, uh, sessions to, to try to get, uh, recognition for parks and, and land and water conservation, uh, bills and so on and so forth. Um, and then was very fortunate in 2002 to get to the position at the city of Peoria, uh, where we were really in, um, in a position to create some, uh, really new dynamic things, such as the Open Space Master Plan, um, and the Trails, uh, Master Plan. We developed mountain trails and river trails and, and, uh, archaeological, uh, historical, uh, trails. We discovered we had, uh, an operating gold mine on one of our hills that we were able to connect with some Indian, uh, ruins nearby to make a very nice, uh, recreational trail that people could go through. Um, and so it was, I've had, uh, throughout my career, an enjoyment of representing, uh, people to the city, to represent profession, uh, to represent, uh, to, to encourage people to, to utilize our parks. I was on the, uh, BLM, uh, Resource Advisory Committee for three years, uh, down in Arizona, um, and represented the public at large in that. So, uh, I, I don't have a problem, uh, speaking on behalf of an organization that I feel very passionate about, and, and I love parks, I love trails, I love being involved with , uh, community and, uh, with people, so it's kind of the, the thing that attracted me when, when I saw that this, this was an opening. Uh, I, I really miss not being involved, uh, day to day. Uh, you know, it seems like 12 years, all I did was face folks like you to explain what we were doing with our, with our parks. That's kind of a, a fun thing to think that I might be able to be on that side of the, of the, of the dais and, uh, talking about possibilities and, and changes down the line, so.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions you might wanna ask?
We haven't really asked too many off the here, just gonna ask whatever.
Yeah, that's good. Well, there's one here, in case it hasn't been asked, that I think is probably one of the most important ones. What do you feel that the city's greatest parks and recreation deficiencies?
That's the one that we asked. That's the one that we asked. Familiar with, uh, land conservation and water, maybe that's something you could follow up, 'cause it's in your book.
Well, yeah, we have a, we have another committee, the Natural Resource Committee, that I chair in Oregon City, and there are some overlaps, uh, in terms of our interests. Um, we, uh, we have, um, we have, of course, we have buffer gr- buffers around our natural resource areas. How do you feel that parks and recreation might interact with the natural resources, not only the ones we have in the parks, but those that are outside the park area?
Mm-hmm. I, you know, I think they fit hand to glove, frankly. We had, uh, a number of, of sensitive environmental sites, uh, at the city of Peoria where I, I worked for 12 years. Um, and we worked very hard to create, uh, trails and parks, uh, nearby so that people could experience, uh, the wetlands and, and these environmental areas that were, uh, usually 404 areas that had to be set aside, uh, for conservation, uh, where people could observe the wildlife and burrowing owls, in our case, uh, hawks and, and some eagles, but, uh, at kind of a hand's length, so that we weren't, uh, overstepping the, the environmental sensitivity of the area, but actually providing a, an educational opportunity for the citizens of, of the city. And I think that, and also with archaeology as well, and I think that when you can, uh, create situations for the public to experience the natural environment in a, in a safe and responsible way, that they gain a real appreciation, uh, for natural resources, and they actually become protective. And we had a couple of cases, um, where we had a, uh, it wasn't a recognized wetland, but it was in one of our, uh, called it Skunk Creek, uh, really weren't any skunks down there, but it, but it was, one area of this was kind of an overgrown, uh, area, it hadn't been protected by the Corps of Engineers. And there was a, um, a group in a nearby subdivision that felt that there were too many javelina and coyotes and what have you in that area, and they were attacking the dogs and the cats, and could we not go in and, and just get rid of all the trees and the brush and so on and so, so forth that were out there? And we went down to take a look at it and discovered what a rich natural resource that was. Uh, there was a group that was, uh, very, uh, devoted to preserving burrowing owls that had contacted us, and there, I guess there were some burrowing owl sites there they wanted to preserve. Uh, so we actually created a master plan for this little area down there and, uh, had a couple of public hearings nearby, and lo and behold, these folks that originally wanted to take that out became so doggone protective of that area that, I mean, they created a, uh, friends of the Skunk Creek Environmental Association, and they went down and did cleanup and so on, and I think it's, uh, it's, it's kind of the, the responsibility of city government and county government to, to foster opportunities for people to appreciate what they really have in terms of their resources. So, yeah, I think it really fits together with, you know, with the mission of the city and Parks and Recreation. Sorry, I didn't mean to go on soapbox.
Yeah, appreciate you coming by and with you. Thank you very much. So, that was the only, uh, item on the agenda for the work session. So, unless there's further discussion, we will...
We are done with the work session.
Excellent. So, we'll, uh, pause and regroup at seven o'clock for the record.
We'll go ahead and, uh, open the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, uh, for December 6th, 2018. Um, uh, want to, uh, introduce ourselves, is probably just the easiest way to do it, starting with Karen.
Karen Maury.
Doug Neely.
Troy Ballinger.
Phil Daniels.
I should've said the lead Doug Neely, but anyway. Uh, now, we've, we've, uh, we've been informed, we ha- we have the October, uh, we have minutes here that we have received for...
Oh, we have a annual election of officers first on the agenda?
Yeah.
I move we postpone them to the February meeting?
I, I, I think it...
And I second that motion.
If, especially if we're going to, um, have new members, I think they, I think it is appropriate that they could also vote, assuming we're gonna vote them, uh, some people onto the open positions.
And not necessarily nominate people who aren't here.
Yeah.
You only have two likely victims.
So, um, we have a first and a second, we don't necessarily need to, uh, vote on that unless you would like to have an official vote?
For the record, yeah.
So, we have a first and a second, any other discussion? I'll take role. Daniels?
Aye.
Ballinger?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Maury?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Uh, we have the approval of the minutes for December 6th, which I guess we just received. Uh, do we want, has everybody had a chance to look through them? I was, I was glancing for them.
Should we move, you, move that farther down the agenda and make a motion that we do so?
I hear a second?
Second.
So, the approval of the December ma- of the December ma- meeting minutes will be put off until the next meeting. All favor?
That was not, that was not his, that was not his motion.
No, just later in the...
His motion was later down the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, that's wrong to do then, okay.
You can amend that if you want.
No, that'd be fine. Um, do we have any citizen comments for people not on the agenda, on any topics not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll proceed. And we have a presentation now from the Hillendale Pickleball Club, Tim West and Robert Smallwood.
Hello.
How are you?
Hi, Karen.
Hi, Tim.
How are you?
I am fine.
Good.
And Robert Small, Tim West, and, uh, I'm the ambassador for United States Pickleball Association, I'm the ambassador for Oregon City, and I represent pickleball in Oregon City.
Can we try that again so I can hear? That scream is really annoying.
Browning you out.
I'm the ambassador for the United States of America Pickleball Association for, in Oregon City. Sounds more important than it really is, but, um, and we, as a group, um, want to thank you guys for, um, your support in the past for getting Hillendale Pickleball Courts going to what they are today. Uh, and we would, our goal tonight, uh, go ahead, Tim, he's created a PowerPoint to explain our...
I don't know if you can see, the slide's behind you, either way, okay, this is...
If you have a pointer, we'll have to turn it around.
There'll be no pointing, he'll stop about things. All right, so, the reason why we're here is that, uh, we found that, uh, pickleball in Oregon City has become so popular that, uh, nighttime playing would be just, uh, the, the ideal thing for the whole court and community, to get more people involved, to get, uh, the people involved that are involved now even more involved, and then, uh, do the outreach that we can to get the rest of the community involved in, uh, in pickleball, since we think it's such a great sport. All right? So, and the reason why we're here is to ask for your support so that we can, uh, get some funding to get some lighting on the court system. I've, uh, sat in on a meeting, or spoke with Phil Lewis and Jonathan Waters, Walters?
Waverly.
Waverly, uh, and presented them our ideas, and, uh, he thought they were really good, and this would be our next step to get your approval so that we could go ahead and get the, the next set of funding, all right? So, um, that's why we're here, and, um, first of all, we wanna go ahead and say thank you for your support and, uh, the previous funding for our court, because three years ago, this was an abandoned tennis court up at Hillendale that nobody was using, and, uh, it was something that, uh, with, uh, non-dedicated use, it was something that, it was very difficult to go ahead and play any kind of sport with a court that had so many different lines on it that can't see which sport you're playing and which lines you're supposed to be in and out on, all right? But, uh, it, the, uh, Hillendale Pickleball Club is a 501(c)(3), and with, uh, that designation, we applied for, uh, some grants, but first of all, you're all back up here, uh, for those that don't know about pickleball, um, it is one of the fastest-growing sports in the United States. It's a really fun game, it's a mixture of tennis and badminton and ping pong, and, uh, it is a very fast sport where you don't need to move around a lot, and it, it appeals to a lot of people that, uh, don't wanna go ahead and beat up their joints. So, it, uh, at any one time, uh, the Hillendale Pickleball, um, Courts, uh, at nine o'clock in the morning, uh, any sunny day is full of 20 to 50 people playing pickleball for three hours at a shot, and, uh, it's a whole lot of fun. But, um, it, it's something that's grown a lot in the United States, uh, one of the things that, uh, people are looking for are places to play, and, uh, Oregon City has the nicest courts in the Portland area, and people, uh, on, you know, playing at this nine o'clock in the morning session, uh, come from literally all over the Portland metropolitan area, everywhere from Gresham to North Portland to, to Beaverton, they're all coming here because these are the best courts, uh, around, and, uh, a very nice community that Robert has, uh, put together. So, this is something that, uh, we have, uh, people of all skill levels, you don't have to really be an expert at this, we have from beginner to expert, and we'll help you and coach you along the way to get your skills up to, to get there. So, it's just, uh, a lot of fun to go ahead and play. So, um, three years ago, we did apply for grants, and, uh, we got two big grants, $3,800 from the CPP, and that is a Community Partnership Program? Partnership Program, and $25,000 from Metro, and, uh, these funds were used to take the court from the, the previous slide that I showed with all those lines to, um, resurfacing it, painting it to, with the official pickleball courts, and, uh, putting in lockers for nets and balls and paddles, we have loaned paddles for everybody, so this is something that , uh, it really has been a success. So, this is what the, uh, the funding did for Hillendale, and it went from, uh, the, you know, all the lines on the courts to, uh, the nicely painted pickleball, uh, courts as you see right there.
If I may interject, uh, we, we did this, uh, without losing the ability to play tennis and/or basketball, so we maintained those, um, options for the neighborhood to continue playing those sports, and very often overlooked is the fact that you can play badminton there too, because the pickleball court is the same size as Badminton Court. So, if a family has their own net, they can bring it there and play badminton, so I just thought I'd interject that.
How many pickleball courts are there in Hillendale?
There's eight here.
Eight?
Eight.
Mm-hmm. So, there are pickleball courts throughout the Portland area, but they look like the left-hand side of the screen and not the right-hand side of the screen, and, uh, especially when you play indoors, when you see all these lines on the courts, it's very difficult to go ahead and play. So, we have a tremendous asset right here in Oregon City, and, uh, we'd like to improve it, right? So, here's our wish list for, uh, our club. We'd love the full court lighting. You're laughing at stadium bleachers, so, and we wanna incorporate that in the fencing. Would, would love a roof on top of this, would be awesome, and then as long as we're, uh, wishing for the whole shebang, we'll talk about world peace too, as for that. But, it's something that, uh, we have an asset here that can be improved quite a bit, and lighting would open it up to, uh, a whole group of people, or Oregon City, uh, residents that would, uh, really like to play in the evening when, you know, to work and during the day, unlike a whole bunch of retired people that play in the mornings, uh, they'll, uh, open this up. So, what I've seen is that there is an example of a tennis court that was lit up in Happy Valley, and they just, last year, put in some lighting on a tennis court, uh, that, you know, enclosed two tennis courts, very similar to what Hillendale had, and, uh, they, these lights are really nice, they're, they're high up, they're, they're not obtrusive to people walking around, but yet, uh, at night, they provide enough lighting for people to go ahead and play tennis right there. And this is something that, uh, these bright LED lights, uh, would not be a big, huge draw on the power for Oregon City, and there are some controls that, uh, the, uh, Happy Valley people did that make it really nice so that, uh, it's, uh, operated on, uh, some overriding controls so that the parks could set a limit saying, "No more lighting after 10 o'clock," automatic shut-offs. There's a real stat that they could turn on the, the lights with, and it'll only be on for however long that timer's gonna go ahead and be, and it's something that, when nobody's there, nobody's, uh, flipping the lights on. So, this is something that, uh, could be, uh, smartly used and not waste a lot of power or money for everybody.
Another option would be to, uh, to help offset the electrical cost of electrical consumption, it'd be coin-operated, you know, 25 cents for half an hour or something like that, it's not much, but, you know, that can be determined, but a coin-operated system is...
After working in Portland long enough, there's a vandal issue with that, regardless of the fact that it's down there, and they used to work their tennis courts with lights the same way, but it, when it wasn't on, of course, somebody banging into the box all the time, and it's not, puts it on, off, I mean, so what Happy Valley done is, is the best solution. But I was gonna ask you a question, while we're looking at the lighting, is, you, you address the concerns of ambient lighting? And, and most of us don't wanna see those, uh, that light get any further away from the court than possible, and something to keep in mind when you're doing your design, I'm not sure that this was addressed at this particular site, but... Yep, yep, so, the whole thing about, uh, pickleball and, uh, actually official pickleball rules is that you have to have certain lumens for this, and these, these lights, uh, are focused lights so that they're going straight down, and there's not a lot of light pollution on this. If, uh, if there's something that, I, I know the guy that sells these lights, there's, there's hoods that can be put on them so that, uh, you know, if you're, you know, 50 feet away, 100 feet away, you're not gonna be seeing these lights in your eyes, it's focused down into the court. Okay? So, um, I did go out and get a bid, and this is from, uh, Team Electric, they, uh, said, uh, to match this, uh, the lumen requirement that the, uh, Pickleball Association, National Pickleball Association would like, uh, they'd put in six lights, they'd be on, on those 35-foot tall poles, and this would be a, uh, start-to-finish, uh, project where they can go ahead and put the cement in, put the poles in, uh, connect the lights. There is electricity on a light pole that is probably about 150 feet away, and it, uh, was, that light was put in quite a while ago, probably with the higher power wattage, so LEDs with their lower drain could probably not overpower the system on that. So, Tim, let me interrupt, you guess I'm reading under that scope, budget scope, so they're actually planning on installing, on your bid here, six, um, 35-foot direct barry, fiberglass poles, and they're 30 feet above grade? Yes. So, it's not actually 40-some-odd with Hillendale, the picture of Hillendale, they weren't quite as high? Is that what, they're not as tall as what I saw in the Hillendale picture? Oh, um, this, these are 35 feet tall, so it's a 12-foot, uh, tall fence, and, uh, that's why the, those posts look so tall, right there. Uh, so, this is the exact same post that they would use over in Hillendale.
Is it 35 feet high or 30 feet?
Yeah, 30 feet on grade is what your specs pointed out. Yeah, 30, yep.
So, five below?
That's right.
And that's what the...
And that's what the Capitol order as well?
Yes.
Thirty plus the five below?
These are the same lights. Okay. So I know that it is an objective for your committee to go ahead and light the parks, and I know from talking to Phil that all of a sudden, well, you're lighting just the courts, you gotta light the way to the courts, and that gets beyond the scope of what we're going to fundraise for, but it's something that we'd love to go ahead and make this a more usable park system, make the Hillendale Pickleball Court something that can be utilized in a whole, you know, different time period, and it is a pickleball court that's far enough away from all residential units that you're not going to be kept up at night with that. We, I have got the buy-in from the Hillendale Pickleball Neighborhood, or Hillendale Neighborhood Association, from William Gifford, and a tentative buy-in and support for the foundation, saying that therefore this lighting would support us in fundraising. So really, our mission here tonight was to present this to you, to see if indeed we can get your buy-in so that we could go ahead and start fundraising and looking for grants and getting the money to go ahead and do this. So really, we're asking you and Phil, what our next steps should be to go ahead and get this done? I know that there are grants available that we're going to apply for, and if there's any other sources that we could reach out to with your assistance, this would be tremendous.
And I think in mentioning before this meeting started, it doesn't particularly concern Hillendale, but there might even be possibilities of more pickleball courts in our new parks that we're putting two new parks into the system. Is that something that is a possibility down the road that the group would be interested in seeing happen?
Well, world peace first.
World peace before that. And I wanted to just talk about a couple of items that were brought up, so the Hillendale, so this, just a couple of slides to give context, so Hillendale Park, you can see there in the upper-left corner, we have the pickleball courts, the parking, oh, there we go, so the pickleball courts and then the parking lot, and as Tim said, you know, one of the concerns of staff is that the safety of the participants, if we're going to light the courts, and somebody in theory could use the courts until ten PM, lights turn off, and they have to try to stumble their way to the, to their car in the parking lot, that we want to make sure that nobody, you know, is tripping, or that there's no safety, security concerns that may happen with an unlit park during the evening hours. And so an overview of the courts, so you can see the courts that are there. So a couple of different options, again, wanting to light from the parking lot to the courts, the currently the only entrance into the courts is that kind of southern corner. We do have a few interior lights in the park that are PGE poles that are lit and not enough to fully light the path. The second option would be, again, coming down this way, first option would be lighting up and around. Some of the conversations that we had internally were that if we had individuals that were, you know, not in a group, or if they're walking alone, that the interior of the park might be, you know, we have some vegetation issues and maybe some sightline issues from the street that might be more advantageous to go with an option A of lighting the court or the pathway to the north of the courts and then back around the exterior of the park as opposed to going through the interior of the park, which is a little bit more of a straight shot, but again, you have some vegetation and some distance from the street where you might have in the other option. So we're looking at costs and what that might look like.
Why would the, why does the vegetation cause an issue if we're going to use an existing path?
Sightlines, so from a security perspective, SEPT ed, having appropriate sightlines between where folks are at and where people typically are located, so looking from the street if somebody were to drive past, and just a commonly perception of safety, I think, is typically the thing that you look at.
I might oppose a question, you see there are already some lights on the option B?
Correct, so there's a pole light, maybe somewhere in this area.
You can see it kind of right in the middle there, right below yours. See the little white dot?
Oh, there it is.
There you go. And then there's another one toward the, toward the entrance of the park, at the street.
You have a couple of poles near the parking lot currently.
The time when the players would use the, use the facility would be, I presume, during the regular, what is it, six to ten or whatever?
Six to ten.
Six to ten.
Yeah.
And so that nobody would be using that during that other period of time.
Correct, yeah.
The only thing, are the lights that we currently have there on twenty-four hours?
They are, they're censored, and so when it gets dark, they turn on.
Okay.
And then stay on until sun up?
They stay on in the evening hours until sun up, when they turn back.
Have you figured out how many lights you'd have to put for option B versus option A?
We have not yet. I would envision it would be fewer, just looking at the distance traveled and the existence of the current lights.
Well, and I would say too, if we added lights to option B, so it isn't fewer, it might light the, light a little bit better with that, but the safety issues, you know, or something else that might help that. I have a few questions, can I ask those now?
Sure.
You mentioned that the basketball courts, tennis courts, or basketball, tennis and badminton can also be played here. In your pictures, I see picklebar and pickleball nets. Where are the basketball hoops?
If you look on the left side?
Okay.
There are two half-court hoops.
Okay. And so the nets belong to your group, and you bring them out for your competitions and put them away?
The pickleball.
The pickleball nets, sorry, I'm jumping back. Okay.
At the top and bottom, there's a yellow structure?
Those are the lock boxes you were talking about. Okay, so those are your nets, and so if they, if other people wanted to play basketball, they can do that, if they want to play pickleball, not part of your group, just come down with their family, they can bring their nets and do that?
There are.
As well as badminton?
Quite a few people that bring their own nets to play.
And I would imagine we don't restrict the use of that court, if they wanted to bring volleyball, they could, if they wanted to play whatever dodgeball on it, they could, as long as it's not being used by someone else, right? I mean, it's open to public use.
Yes.
Okay.
There's people that play basketball when we're playing pickleball, so they use the bottom left-hand corner right there, and people play in the other courts. So you don't reserve on those courts when you're having tournaments, for example?
When we have tournaments, we do.
You reserve the courts, uh-huh.
Yes.
If you're just open play, if it's available, you use it, if not, then you don't.
And if we do have people playing where the basketball courts are, the nets, and there's another court available, and somebody wants to come and play basketball, a family or some county workers, we'll just pick up the net and go to an empty court, so...
Farther away.
Yeah.
Okay. And then you're looking, so I guess, what are you asking from us? Our blessing for you to go raise some money and do this? Or are you asking us for money?
World peace.
Because the first option is a whole lot easier.
Yes, we'd like a letter of endorsement. The second option probably couldn't be done that way.
Exactly, exactly what I'm getting at, so...
A letter of endorsement when we apply for the grants goes a long way.
Okay. Have you explored the option for solar lighting with some panels on the back of those lights to, for the, for the power to reduce, because while you may be fundraising, at some point the city's going to pay for electricity. And so I would be very interested in solar to reduce that cost, and I think that would be beneficial to the citizens of Oregon City, that you wanting this and raising the money or doing everything you can to kind of minimize the impact to the rest of the group, which I think is going to buy you a lot of popularity, right? When we can do this better, and certainly probably going to help gain some players from the area when they realize that this is a good thing and not how it might be hitting their pocketbook. So I think that's worth exploring. I love that this demographic is an older demographic currently, and so it certainly brings that older demographic to the parks instead of just the younger kids and younger families on the swing sets and playing soccer games.
Certainly.
Which is also valuable. So I really like that. And Phil, I don't know if this is your area, but I would be very interested in knowing the impact to the fund, to the budget for running these lights on a regular basis. I mean, and certainly a ballpark, because it depends on how many lights and if they go solar and don't, and that kind of information. I love the coin-operated idea.
It does.
Hang on, I got the floor right now. I love the coin-operated idea. My concern is the vandalism and the theft that comes with that. I think to some extent that can be minimized when it's maybe credit card only, but that creates issues for people that don't carry a credit card to the court, they leave that at home and bringing a couple of quarters, right? And so I'm not sure that's a solution, but it certainly fixes some things. I like the switches, you know, where it stays on for a certain period of time, they do that at the splash parks and such, where the water's on for, I don't know what it is, a few minutes. And so I think that's good, but then it also puts that cost onto the city to take care of that instead of those that are using it. So I don't know what the solution is, or those are just some of my concerns, and so you guys are the geniuses and you can figure out the solutions, but those are just my concerns. But I love it, I think it's great, it's a beautiful court, and I love that it's multi-use. And again, a concern that I think needs to be addressed is, we talk about this a lot about if we're going to do this to one park, what do we do to the other park, right? How are we going to spread this around? At the same time, I have been a huge advocate of if somebody wants to do this work, which you have done, and if somebody wants to pay the money, which is what you're going to go find out, I think we should say go. I don't like to put roadblocks and say, well, Will, we can't take your money, no, we'll take the money. Because if it improves one of our parks, my philosophy is, if it's not a city decision to spend the money, I don't think we have, in my opinion, we shouldn't be restricting that use, if that makes sense. If you're willing to do this and people are willing to pay for pickleball, that doesn't mean they're going to pay for something else in a different park because they want pickleball, and that's what they're willing to do it for, and that's what the grant is for, I'm all for in that regard. But I am interested in knowing the cost for the lighting and such. I love option B a little bit better, I understand there's some security issues, but I like it better because it's shorter, it's right down the middle of the park, it doesn't stretch people around, my concern is if when you stretch them around too far, they're going to just cut through the middle of the park, and they might have a liability issue if they choose to do that and break an ankle because they can't see. So if we give them the shortest path, we might minimize possibilities for injury, which is minimize our liability possibly, as well as there's already lighting there, which means there's already electricity there and kind of makes our job a little bit easier. So that's kind of my reasons for liking option B, and if it means that we have to include something in there, because I haven't been out there in a little while, so I don't remember, but if we include something that improves those pathways, then maybe we do that. We also have to consider that these pathways, once we light them, are not going to be used just for pickleball. So we have to have, you know, things that are, they're going to work for ADA and things like that, that have to be considered, and we can't say, well, those guys wouldn't be playing pickleball. They might, and they might use the path for something else.
Do we need a motion to, or have them come to us later with a letter of support?
We could do a motion and do that now. So one other thing just to consider, so the request and the funding that was outlined in their proposal of the fifty thousand dollars roughly, sorry, I have like four PowerPoints up here, here we go, and so the proposal...
The before and easy change or whatever?
Yeah, the proposal was, yeah, forty-eight and six-fifty. And so depending on the grants they apply for, I know that, you know, probably the community enhancement grant would be one that they would be well-suited for and probably would, you know, I would fully recommend that they apply for, depending on matching grants that they might be or reserve funds that they have within their organization. There is a requirement for matching grant funds for that, for the community enhancement grant, and so there would have to be either some match, whether it's, again, from the city or from other grants or other reserve funds that the pickleball club has at their disposal to add to the grant application to line up that budget. One of my, again, one of my considerations for approving this would be that we need pathway lighting, and that is not included in the total that's listed. So if we were successful, if the pickleball club was successful in their applications, and we're able to fundraise or find funds for the full, you know, forty-eight thousand or fifty thousand for nicer numbers, we would still probably have an additional fifty thousand for pathway lighting and other pieces of the project that would be required. So it is probably looking at a hundred thousand dollar project all in, and there probably would need to be funds allocated from the city or from other funding mechanisms in order to make this come together.
You know, I'm honestly surprised, given that all of our parks are open until ten o'clock, I'm surprised that they're not lighted. So, but I think this is wonderful, and I certainly would support any grant that they apply for, and the bill just went up, so there went world peace.
Things get in the way. Pickleball rules.
Well, the lighting is a desire in your park, it's not a requirement that we're looking for from your department, is it?
I would require lighting on the pathway in order to get there, I don't think it's sound, a sound decision to just light the courts without lighting the pathway for folks to get back and forth.
What about phasing that in? I mean, I agree with you, at the same time, if it fits our budget better rather than postpone what they want to do, what if they were to light, you know, get their grant, do what they want to do, and then within the year, or maybe two years, whatever's reasonable, it's pen and ink in the budget to take care of that?
Yeah, and you know, we could...
Within a reasonable amount of time.
Yeah, you know, the discussion could happen, you know, we could do the install of the court lights, not turn them on, which might not be super, I can't imagine the pickleball club being very excited about that, but I would not want to have a lit facility on the interior of the park without having appropriate lighting to and from where they're going to be accessing the park.
No, I would appreciate that, I just was thinking it'd be nice if we, you know, if we're a little behind in funding for our piece, if they don't have to wait for their, to go ahead and get what they want. I don't think postponing turning the lights on is good, that usually creates issues because then you have citizens saying, hey, you spent all this money, we're not even using it.
Right, yeah.
And then you get to answer all those phone calls?
I agree.
Because they don't realize that there's two different people playing this game, right?
I would agree.
That some of it's them and some of it's us, so that usually creates issues, and then to have some vandalism if you do on a facility that's not even usable yet because we don't turn it on, that creates an issue. Again, I think it's a great idea, and I'm all in favor of it. My concerns come with what I had already mentioned, and then along the lighting of the path, how does that play into what else we're doing in other parks? And are we abandoning, ignoring a couple of parks for this? I think there's times we make that exception, because again, we don't want to say we don't want your money because we don't want to spend our money. I think we look at the opportunity that's given us, and if this is an opportunity and someone's willing to do this work, I think we prioritize to match that and to accommodate that, but I think we also have to balance that with what are the other parks getting?
Okay, so to get the ball rolling...
We're not making a motion yet.
Problem five years down the road, yes?
I still think we have some discussion items, so I don't know if we're planning to make a motion yet.
You need a motion before discussion.
We can do beforehand, after.
Yeah, I mean, we...
Robert would not go for that.
I don't know if this body is going by Robert's rules, but they, usually you have a discussion before you make a motion because you don't, otherwise you don't know what you're making a motion for. The only concern I had about the lighting situation on option B was it's a natural resource area, it's got a stream going through, and there's a setback, and I... And I'd be concerned about nesting birds, but if only, it's only a limited time during the nighttime hours and I don't have that concern. A question I have, and then it probably doesn't even apply to, given the heights of the lights. Do we, in a few ways, we do have lights. Have we had vandalism problems, people breaking them out or anything?
We recently, in my time with the city, we have not had substantial vandalism issues with lighting. Talking with Jonathan Wayverly, evidently there were lighting posts that were at this park previously that went between the red soils campus and the park that were damaged vandalism a few times and they ended up pulling them out. Again, we haven't seen that at other parks and I wouldn't be, I wouldn't not do this project based on vandalism, from vandalism standpoint.
Well, I'm guessing that that vandalism was even prior to the other improvements that have already been done to the park, right?
Oh, yeah.
So before was even used as much as it is, so.
Quite possibly.
It was a different park, we can almost say back then.
Certainly the beauty of this whole project is to put more people into the park. And the less desirable and the dark areas of the park move to another location. But anytime you're using a park with accepted activities, the unacceptable activities leave.
Agreed. And one other thing, just to Doug's point, we do have some seasonal flooding issues on the interior of the park near the option B pathway. You know, it's hit or miss, but we have a spring that actually pops up and floods sometimes that pathway on the option B side. Whether or not it's enough to deter folks from using that during a high water event.
My guess is that human nature is to take the shortest route and even if you lit the long one, they'd take the short one.
Yeah, which would be there, you know, it's a liability standpoint for us, I think, to, you know, as long as we have a pathway available for them to get from A to B if they choose to go on the unlit pathway, I think that leaves us in a better position, not that we should be thinking-
If that pathway, go after it. Quite often, one more example of why the pathway from A to B is shortest distance is probably, as you've mentioned, is probably what people want to take. And that pathway can also be used for your maintenance activities as well, where that ground is so soaking wet. In the wintertime, you want to access leaves or whatever else you may need to do. That is a wonderful opportunity to get, and get that pathway up to 6 to 8 feet wide.
Sure. One thing that, I would want to hold this thing up because of it, but the benefit of taking both option A and B in the winter months, you have people that maybe you want to jog or walk in the nighttime hours and you can do that whole loop.
To fully light them.
And this is one of the parks where we could, we could connect Claremont all the way to Beaver Creek through the pathway system we have. So it's ideal from that standpoint. So some thought at a later point, I mean, you have an issue in option A or B, but maybe there's a real benefit to having both.
Yeah, no, I can appreciate that because that would increase the usage of it and accomplish that. My question then is, can this work for the lighting? Because the discussion has come up because of what you want to do, can it be included in the grant? Now, because it's city, I guess it's all city property, but because it's really a city thing, maybe it can't. And I certainly wouldn't want your ask on your grant to be so big that it's a no versus taking what you can get. So I don't understand, I don't write grants, I don't know how that works, so. But I, so it's more of a question that worth exploring is to make the grant big enough to accommodate that or to share that cost because of the things that you've heard us discuss. But again, I wouldn't want it to be so big that the answer's no, it's too much money. I'd rather get what you can get than get nothing.
Just more grants.
That's true. And if it's just a matter of more work, I know it's easier for me to say because I'm not going to write the grants, then that's, that's great. That's fine. But if it means you get a no because you're asking too much, then I can appreciate not asking for that. But I think it's worth consideration. From a, from a community, I guess the neighborhood perspective, you mentioned the hoods as an option. I would like to see the hoods be the first option and not an add-on. Just because I think it goes a long way when the citizens in that area can feel comfortable what's happening. And if you don't put the hoods, you may be affecting only two houses, but they might be the loudest people.
There are many houses over there.
Well, or people or whatever, but-
Lights or food.
That doesn't invalidate my point though, Karen. My point is just the same. If we, if it affects two houses, let's not affect those two houses negatively and it certainly just makes the facility a little bit nicer for whatever might happen. So I think it's just worth adding as a priority.
Okay, will I make a motion?
Any other, any other points, discussion items? Let's all undertake a motion. Oh, go ahead.
It's something that also makes our ask a lot bigger, okay? So sure, here we're, we're just going for our little court and then all of a sudden we have a large light project. But it's something that definitely we could ask for as much as we can, absolutely. But so what if we make it three quarters and we get all this money? And we're ready to go because the funds are there, but we're about that short on the pathway lighting. Would the city step in to do that?
Yeah, and what I was gonna say is that we'll work with them to identify an appropriate scope and what they're reasonably able to fundraise through grants and other funds and what the city would reasonably be expected to contribute to the project as well.
And I love when dollars come from the community. We have people stepping up saying, we want this and we're gonna pay for it or find a way to pay for it. I love it and I like to complement that with whatever we can do to help. So we're not in a position to make that decision, but certainly I'm in favor of helping in that regard. I just think we also have to consider, make sure we're not abandoning other projects because you know how that, it's gonna look in the city as well. And it's not gonna make your group looked upon favorably by the people in the city as well. But if it's a few bucks here and there, I think that's, I think something we can resolve.
And we're approaching the budget process for the next biennium, which will complement the same time period for at least the community enhancement grants. I'm not sure what other grant opportunities that might be available to the group, but we should, over the next couple of months, be able to identify, again, what that should look like as far as the city contribution and what they're reasonably able to fundraise through grants and other options.
I was gonna say, I know that PGE gives out various grants. And whether there's a possibility on the lighting piece to approach PGE, you might want to check that out.
We talked a lot recently about deferred maintenance on parks. Was the flooding on that path part of that discussion, I remember, for the Hillendale Park?
We do have some asphalt that needs to be repaired in that area. The flooding is seasonal, has not been identified as, it's kind of a, it's a stormwater system.
So some of what we've discussed tonight as the issue for the pathway has been addressed with deferred maintenance, but a very small piece is what you're saying. Like almost none of it.
The asphalt has been repaired in areas on the, in that section. But the flooding is, it's a storm detention area.
It is a storm detention area, but that is a-
It's a storm creek, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, take force again.
Forty-five minutes later. I move that we support your proposal as presented with the input you've heard. And that we encourage you to come back to us for support. And we encourage you to look for additional grant funding to deal with the additional lighting needs.
We'll do it. We can do that. Can we get a letter of endorsement from the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee?
Can you do that before you know what you're applying for?
Well, they're saying that we know what they're applying for. Metro is one of them that we are applying for.
No, what we're applying for is the 50, wrong numbers, 50-
48, 650.
Yeah, for the court and approximately 50 for the lighting, the path lighting.
Generally, when I write a grant, there's specifics that you put in your letter of support that fit that grant. You don't just use a generic one. So what I was moving is that we will support this. And then when you have a grant in mind, you just let our chair know that we need a letter of support for that grant. Oh, very good.
So I think the-
That was outside of the motion.
The motion is authorize the chair to write a letter.
Yeah.
Once there's an identified grant.
So, yeah, to simplify things, I move that we authorize the chair to write a letter of support when you have identified grants.
Very good, okay. I second.
You have a second?
We do have an opening.
I will second that motion.
Call and paper say aye?
Question, clarification. Do you want to?
Just clarification, we'll call that a motion.
So do we, some of these other things that I've, that we've identified as, that we need to know on costs and different things, is that something we need to know and be able to look at before we authorize that letter to be written?
So I'll-
It comes in between them and Phil.
Yeah, so we'll work with them on identifying the scope and kind of narrowing down until we get to a point before the application periods. Before, you know, we are the property owner, I would need to sign off on any grant opportunity before it would be funded. And so as we get closer, I will probably be updating or we'll ask the folks to come back and give an updated presentation on where we're at. But I can give you further details once we do have them. Just in the, I'm trying to remember, April or May is when the community enhancement grant application is due. So over the next couple of months, we'll have some time to whittle that down and give a better scope of work that you guys will have information on. So once-
Should we have that before we authorize letter of support?
No.
Hang on, this is a question for Phil. Karen, give me a chance here.
Yeah, the most-
Give me a chance here, just I'm gonna ask for clarification.
I think if you're generally supportive, you know, we'll continue to give updates and you're more, well, more than, within your rights to wait to authorize the letter of support until we get closer. I would not want to wait too long because then we, you know, it's a timing issue with when you have meetings and when the deadlines are due and we might miss out on a grant opportunity.
Sure, no, exactly. I don't want to miss out on that, for sure. Okay.
All those that are, please say aye.
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 Can we do that?
And we do need to take roll, unfortunately.
We have to do roll.
We have to do roll now, according to the city recorder.
Is it exactly what we said before?
We're gonna have one issue handled by 10 o'clock.
So we have a, we have a first by Karen and a second by Bill. And if there's other discussion, I will take roll. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Daniels?
Aye.
Ballinger?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Maury?
Aye.
And motion passes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Good luck, Jeff.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert.
All right, I'm going on to, is there any citizens comments for not on the agenda? We have two citizens out. They've been pretty regular, except I missed you for a while there. Anyway, presentation. We've done that and general business, our goals update.
Okay, so this is again with a short house. Is this something that we want to put over to next month again?
Well, you might just, she's asking if we could put this out. However, is there anything, has the goal setting session already occurred or is that still coming up?
The commission goal setting is scheduled for February 1st and 2nd.
So is there a reason that we want to do this before that goal setting session?
I don't think so.
I'm asking the-
I think all the, all the goals that were identified are complementary to, I think, many of the discussion points that the commission will be discussing at the first and second meeting.
It's, you think it's okay to hold this over?
It would be fine to hold it over.
I hear a motion to that effect.
I move that this be postponed till our next meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ballinger?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Maury?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, charter park discussion?
So today we have a discussion of charter parks. As you're aware, we've had a continuing conversation over the last few months bringing our recognized, generally recognized parks and then recognizing them officially as charter parks in our system to offer additional protections. Bring up a short slideshow, giving an overview of where we're at. Then we have two parks for consideration today. And I will be asking for a recommendation to move forward to the city commission for adoption as a charter park by ordinance.
Can I, can I make a query?
Yes.
There are already parks listed in the charter.
Correct.
Are we reviewing them all? That is, are they all going back through this process or the ones that simply were not on the charter?
Just the ones that were not originally on the charter.
That's what I understood. Okay.
So again, chapter 10 of the charter discusses parks and natural beauty. In that outlines how parks can be voted on and made into parks. And then after that, they cannot be changed or adapted for any other use other than for parks and recreation without a vote of the people. Current vote, our current parks listed in the charter are those included there. As we've gone through the process, there is a process for adding additional parks to have those similar protections. They can be adopted by ordinance, which is how we are choosing to formally recognize parks as parks in our system and have the same protections as charter parks.
Can we go back one? I wanted to see the ones that were in the charter again, real quick.
So these were the original parks in the charter. I believe it was in '72 when the charter was updated to include these parks.
I'm gonna make a query on one of them here. The Marawaklin House is now an E, is a natural, is the national park the city granted an easement. Does that affect the charter designation whatsoever? I'm asking the director, please, not-
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
So we have recognized a couple of other parks by, as parks by ordinance. In 2003, both Abernathy Creek Park and John Storm Park were recognized as parks by ordinance. In September of 2018, this group made recommendations for the other parks listed. We have 10 parks there that moved forward to the city commission and were adopted in a second reading as a park by ordinance with the city commission in September of 2018. In November of 2018, we had four additional parks, Kenema Slope, Pioneer Center, Stafford Park and Street Cemetery. And then in December of 2018, Old Kenema Park was recognized as a park by ordinance. So the other parks that have not been recognized or have partially been recommended as being recognized as a park by ordinance are listed here. So under consideration tonight, we have Oak Tree Park and Singer Creek Park. The city commission is planning to, you know, assuming a formal recommendation from this group to hear an ordinance for Mountain View Cemetery, which was already a recommendation of this group at the December meeting, I believe it was. And then the other two parks, Oak Tree and Singer Creek Park, that we will hopefully receive recommendation tonight. City commission, which in 2019, a date to be determined, will hopefully be observing Ermitaing House and Berkeley Hills Park as parks by ordinance. This group has already made a formal recommendation for both of those properties. But we're still working on some behind the scenes work, including easement on the Ermitaing House property for access and a lot line adjustment. And then for Berkeley Hills Park, a, waiting on the county to formally recognize the tract for the pump station and the easement for access from the street, from the right of way into the park. Practically consider an upcoming meeting, McLoughlin Promenade has not been recognized yet. We are in the process of producing a survey for, a boundary survey as well as a topographical survey for that park this spring. And we'll hopefully be coming back to this group sometime late spring or early summer for a formal recommendation. Uh, the other park, uh, to be determined, as we have already discussed at previous meetings, was Dement Park, uh, which this group thought we should hold off on and possibly, uh, sell the property at some point, uh, to put towards uh, acquisition of other green space somewhere else in our system.
And is Sportcraft now off the list?
Sportcraft, um, we will be at this point holding, um, the, uh, city attorney's office, uh, thought that if it, if our lease ever expired with the current, uh, lease holder, uh, for Sportcraft, that we would then need to go back to a public vote of the people to, uh, enter into an agreement with a different, uh, organization or business and that it was probably in the best interest of the city to hold off on that at this point. Um, we're currently in negotiations with the, the owner to update the, the current lease, one of five year, uh, which expires in June of this next year, or June of this year, as it were. So property's under consideration tonight. We have two properties. Uh, one is Singer Creek Park, uh, eighteen acre nature park in the River Crest neighborhood. It has ten individual tax lots and extends, I have a couple of unique, uh, sections of this property. Uh, we do have a pedestrian pathway, uh, which runs, uh, from this neighborhood into the, the center of the park. Uh, much of this area is a natural area. Um, and then we have some open lawn area over in this section which, um, connects to the right of way. Uh, most of the pathway system is through this section of the park. Um, it is again ten lots and, um, the, the property boundaries are, are fairly well known. And that is all I have for Singer Creek Park unless there's any questions or comments.
And the piece, the pieces, uh, separate, uh, of the rest of the park.
You're looking over here in this area?
Yes, that's the one.
Yeah, so that's
Why that's
And that's Stafford Park.
That's Stafford?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll move on to the next park is Oak Tree Park. Uh, so it's on South End Road, uh, adjacent to the fire station. Uh, it is a point four acre pocket park. Um, it does have a couple of trees and not much else. Um, at one point, the property did extend a little further north, uh, northwest of the property, but was, um, uh, right of way was given to, uh, the fire station as well as, uh, for development of the property, uh, just to the north of, uh, the park.
How is this something, you know?
I'm sorry, how was this one?
How is this something?
Uh, I think it was a plat. Uh, yeah, dedicated as a plat. On the plat is a park.
So how much of a, how much of an issue is it for the, uh, your limited staff to maintain that piece of property? What does it function as other than an open space?
Yeah, uh, and that's
Dog run or something?
Yeah, basically, right now, that's all it functions as, as a, as an open space. We have had conversations around maybe, uh, trying to enter into a partnership with the fire station to make improvements at, uh, at that park, I mean, as it's, uh, directly adjacent. Um, I had a similar property when I was in the DOWs that, uh, the firehouse park that, uh, the, the fire department assisted us in some maintenance costs and had some, uh, fire themed playground equipment that was on, on the ground. So maybe eventually looking at trying to enter into a partnership to, uh, expand what we currently have there, which is not much. But yeah, as far as the, the maintenance, I mean, it's, it's mowing and very minimal tree trimming.
At that point, it's just mowing is what your maintenance is? There's no irrigation in that property?
Uh, there is irrigation on the park.
So sometimes there could be issues with that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Irrigation repair. So is there a, a, I mean, I just want to ask the rest of the group, but if we're trying to, you know, I don't understand necessarily that because we own it that we keep it as a park on inventory of it. If it can be used within the community, some private purchase, I don't, um, this is one I'd like to discuss longer.
Yeah, it was dedicated on the plat, which means that if it were to, uh, not be used as a park, uh, we would need to, um, we wouldn't be able to sell it necessarily. It would be reabsorbed into the, uh, neighborhood association, the house, house homeowners association in some form. Uh, so there would be a process of, uh, reincorporating it into something other than a park because it was accepted by the city, by the commission as a park through the plat.
Was this one the
It's off the tax
Was this one where the fire station is built or, you know?
Who's this one? Uh, that I do not know.
Okay.
Something Karen.
But you're, what you're saying is that we would not, uh, we would not be able to sell the property.
Uh, to my knowledge, the, the information I've received from our city attorney is that because it was dedicated as a plat, as, as a park, the, the city is, um, you know, caring for it as a park and in essence, it belongs to the city. Similarly to like right of way being designated on a plat, it isn't officially, uh, you know, the, the city can't sell it off in the same way that we could sell off property that we purchased outright or were, um, gifted in some other form.
It's basically the same thing as Shenandoah and Harke. Um, when the developers platted out the, um, development, they designated a spot as park. And then when they transferred or when they filed the plat, basically they said, here, city, that's yours. So, um, it's not the most useful little piece of ground, but
It does serve a purpose in that neighborhood.
The other ones that came in the same way.
Yeah, it's, um, it, it's in a service area that doesn't have a lot of other green space. And so it does serve a purpose. Uh, whether or not we're making the best use of that space, I would agree, it's, it does not have many amenities.
Well, the concern about, say, trying to go over a homeowners association, there'd be no guarantee that it would necessarily be maintained as such.
Mm-hmm.
And does, it does, do they have a neighborhood association there to be in?
Uh, I mean, it's in the, it's in the South End Neighborhood Association.
Oh, I may have made that statement wrong.
But as far as the
Homeowners Association.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure there's a homeowners association there or not.
So, so it, it's, I understood you to say that it's, the city cannot sell that.
I would have to do additional research.
Supposedly being used as a park right now to satisfy the terms of the, of the acquisition.
Correct, yeah. So it was platted, that was the original intent when the city took ownership of the, the park and, and approved the, uh, the plat and the construction in that area was that it would be used as a park.
We, um,
It seemed like the church owned, um, Methodist Church, um, it was moved from Parlow, right, when they originally were going to put, put the fire station in and, and they decided that wasn't a great spot for it. So they, the church offered to sell this piece of property to the, uh, fire, I don't know if it was owned by the city at that time or not, but the, but it to be used as a fire department facility. And I, and so, and that was not part of the church property then, is what we're hearing?
I think, I think in fact it was.
I do too.
Yeah, that's my recollection.
Could have been. I, I know that the, um, the development just north of that, uh, a requirement of the development was that they had right of way from that street, which actually shrunk down the size of, uh, Oak Tree Park in order to accommodate that additional right of way. Mm-hmm. Uh, but yeah, the timing of, uh, you know, the, the acquisition, I'm not positive.
Well, I noticed we're going to have, uh, a member of the public who want to speak to this, uh, but before that happens, um, I would say if, if it's going to be parks property anyway, what, um, it, it seems to me that there should be a discussion of how that property is being used.
Maybe a grass pickleball court.
Well, maybe, maybe there is a recreational aspect of it. Uh, the, the streets are fairly busy.
Yeah.
And, uh, but it'd be nice to maybe put some more trees in there or, you know, do, do something else with that piece of property. Um, and, um, putting I mean, if it's essentially going to belong to the city anyway, I, I guess, I guess it might as well be dealt with that way and with, uh, with perhaps efforts in the neighborhood to see what, you know, what, what that property should be used for.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments? Uh, otherwise, I think we have a
We do have one public comment.
Yeah, and some public input. Coming ahead.
So we have Tom O'Brien.
Tom O'Brien, I think you know me. I may live here in the city. I've wondered for years why that has not been utilized as a park since it is a park. And it seems to me that the perfect place for something such as horseshoe pits would be there. You've got massive amount of parking around the area. You're going to be doubling the population with the South End Concept Plan. The park really cannot be used for much other than lawn bowling or something like horseshoe pits. Fairly low maintenance. I think the firefighters would enjoy going out there and using it if there was something there to use. I know that there are people in the neighborhood who would love to be able to utilize it for something. It has, I was just commenting on the way down here tonight, volumes of traffic going by it. We came down here at about six forty and the traffic was backed up fifteen deep trying to get through the intersection at, uh, Warner Millie, Warner, Warner Millie. So if we put something on that parcel of land, people would recognize that it is in fact something other than a vacant lot.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Like I said, it was when we saw the list, we were making the tour, I had no idea where that one was. I, I knew the others, but I didn't know that one existed either.
Piece of grass. Okay, so since it's sounding like there is an interest to retain that, um, I would move that Oak Tree Park and Singer, Singer Creek Park, uh, be recommended for charter status by ordinance.
Your second?
My second, uh, motion.
Roll call, please.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ballinger?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Maury?
Aye.
Motion passes. You going down the line here? Um, the, uh, Newell Creek Canyon property. This is the Metro piece or?
This is, well, kind of.
Shaw Spady always gets her picture in there somehow.
So, uh, a little background on the conversation today. So, um, Metro, uh, contacted us a few, a few months ago now, um, in regards to the, well, maybe about a year ago now, in regards to Newell Creek property. Um, and, uh, we've had a couple of different discussions in my time with the, with the city. Uh, this group has gone on a tour of the, the Newell Creek property site and the proposed, uh, trail system that will go through Newell Creek, Newell Creek Canyon. Um, though what really spurred this specific conversation is our, uh, efforts to go through and identify, uh, properties for the city and, uh, whether or not they are, uh, parks or should be designated as parks. Uh, in those conversations, I noticed that, uh, we had a property and it's identified here as property number one seventy, uh, that is, um, is city property. Uh, it's adjacent to Mountain View Cemetery and it has been, um, acquired for, uh, for park use basically. And that's probably the highest and best use of that, that piece of property. Um, but I also noticed in conversations or in conversations with Metro and in reviewing the Newell Creek Canyon, um, access plan is that uh, they also recognized that as Metro property and planned accordingly to, uh, use it for their, uh, trail system, uh, through the Newell Creek Canyon. So you'll notice the, uh, property in question here in the middle, this kind of odd shaped uh, property just adjacent to the cemetery. So the boundaries for the Newell Creek Canyon are here in the red, all the way around and just adjacent to two thirteen. So it's, uh, two hundred and thirty-three acres total. Uh, they have planned for four miles of hiking and off-road cycling trails, uh, trailhead parking, uh, restrooms, open areas, multi-use accessible trails. And then they also have future expansion, including picnic shelters and, uh, a nature play area. Uh, this is just a, a quick overview of the, uh, trailhead site map. So again, shows, um, the, uh, the parking area. It is just adjacent to the cemetery, uh, just to the north. Um, and will then access, uh, into the, the Newell Creek Canyon, uh, trail system here. Uh, so this is an overview of, uh, the trails map as identified. You'll notice the, uh, the day use or trailhead area here to the left. And then we have, uh, a system of trails, both multi-use, uh, off-road bikes and hiking trails that connect, uh, both internally as well as my very bad attempt to do an overlay of the approximate location of the, the property in question. So you will notice that, uh, the, uh, trail system does run, run through uh, property number one seventy and connects to this neighborhood just to the north of the, uh, the Newell Creek Canyon site. So, um, we're in a little bit of a predicament as we have done a very, or Metro has done a very thorough public engagement process on this, uh, trail system. Uh, they were under the assumption that the property was Metro's property. And, um, at this point, you know, probably the highest and best use would be for them to continue to, uh, operate and maintain that property in some capacity. Uh, Metro is requesting, uh, an option, they're requesting option A, that the city transfers their property to Metro so that the, uh, so Metro can use it for the Newell Creek Canyon, um, uh, property and trail system. Uh, the other option would be for the city retain ownership of the property and then enter into an IGA, uh, intergovernmental agreement for Metro to maintain and operate the city-owned property for park purposes. Uh, we don't need to necessarily come to a decision tonight. And I understand that we have a, you know, a smaller group and this is the first time we've discussed this property. And I'm sure it's something that we want to think about before we make a formal recommendation to the city commission. But, um, I wanted to, again, bring this forward, have an open discussion and then at some point in the near future, probably make a recommendation to either, um, enter into an agreement with them and we maintain ownership or to outright transfer the property to Metro for them to, to own and maintain.
So to clarify something, that was platted as Gales Park with no park in it. It was, it was intended to be all houses. When that property came into city ownership, was there a specification that that be for park purposes?
Uh, it was, yes, it was specified for park use, um, and it was, uh, in lieu of SDCs at the time.
Ah. That's how it came over.
Yeah.
So this was, um, part of the, either New Ridge or New Crest, I forget which is which, but part of their dedication when they built?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So Metro is obviously involved in this discussion and, and do you have a feeling which, which their preference is, as you heard?
Their preference is for a, a transfer for them to, to have ownership of the property.
And what is the downside to the city to do that? Is there a downside that you see at us?
You know, there's, uh, you know, I guess there's more certainty for us to maintain the property to then, if we ever were to want to do something with it fifty years from now, a hundred years from now, um, it, but it's, you know, Metro would use it for park use. I think that's probably the highest and best use of that property. Um, it's already been master planned and gone through, again, a, a public engagement process. It's very thoroughly looked at, uh, how to utilize that property. Um, Metro is very well positioned to be able to care for this space. Uh, it would also alleviate, um, park staff from having to maintain the, the space. Uh, if, if we were to enter into an agreement with them, I, that would be part of the, the conversation and part of the IGA would be for them to, to maintain it and us to maintain ownership. So in theory, there wouldn't be any additional cost for us, um, even if we, you know, moved in that direction for us to continue to, to own the property. Um, I think it's, you know, the, the only benefit would be Um, I think it's, you know, the, the only benefit would be a certainty of we get to decide what to, to use that property for in the long term. But you know, Metro is positioned and that's their, their goal is the same goal, I think, is to, to have it to be used as recreational purposes.
So when they mentioned transfer the property, did they talk about a price as well?
Uh, I do not believe the intent would be for a, a price to be included in that transfer.
So I figured that was the answer, but I had to ask. So um, how long, if we enter into an IGA, typically how long do those last? Uh, without, without adding, I mean, just the original agreement?
Yeah, uh, we have uh, I think we had a, we have a similar property in uh, in Kenema, and I believe it's an easement overlay uh for the property. And so in theory, it's a, an perpetuity of, of the property. That we could enter into a, you know, depending on the, the wish of the commission and the recommendation of this group into a, you know, a 50-year, uh, you know, 20-year, whatever.
Metro has been an excellent partner to the city. Um, the uh, Land Falls project, they have been the lead entity. Uh, and it's not their property, because we got an easement for it. But they've been a great partner with this city in many respects. Um, both in terms of trails and, and uh, actually dedicating part of, I guess, or at least allowing part of Children's Park to extend into their Metro property. Um, uh, I don't know of any other use we could have for the property other than the kind of uh, use that Metro has. Uh, we can build on it. Steve Slofstraard was, uh, preclude us doing anything with the property. Um, I, from my standpoint, I would figure the uh, first option, that would be transfer. Uh, yes, may, maybe they don't pay for it, but uh, they've, they've made tremendous investments in, in our area. They're a great partner.
The IGA works well by the children's park, so I, do we want to vote on this tonight? Or do we want more bodies here?
Well, that's up to the commission. I can move to postpone it. Other kind, excuse me, advisory committee.
Okay, then I would move that we go with option two and enter into an IGA with Metro for maintenance.
Uh, I'm confused on that because does that an, an option for maintenance? But are they going to build a trail in there?
Phil's option two on the presentation. That we enter, that we retain ownership and enter into an IGA for Metro to maintain and operate city-owned properties for park purposes. There, that's my motion.
The query I have here is, there's nothing, there's nothing explicit in this statement that they can build a trail on it.
Yeah, so I can um, at the next meeting, I can bring back additional information if, if you really want to consider the, uh, option B. Um, we have a, a current IGA with them for Kenema Slope Park, um, which is a, an easement. And then we have an IGA for Kenema Children's Park as well with them. Uh, so I can bring forth some, some language that, that might show kind of the differences and what that might look like. Um, but yeah, I, I think at this point, the, the city and staff's perspective is that uh, transfer of property to Metro, uh, you know, we could go either way. And honestly, I don't, I don't think it makes a big difference either way as the, you know, and the intent of the, the end use for the citizen, average citizen using the property would maintain the same. Um, again, the, the only value is certainty for Metro in owning it and being able to maintain and, and plan without having to, you know, interact with the city uh versus the city again, having um securities and knowing that we would own the property long-term and still be able to, to work with as a stakeholder on that, that piece of property with Metro.
You know what? It also, if we retain ownership under option B and, and they're willing for, to get into another IGA with us, that, that could always change. We could, at some point in time, Metro says this isn't working the way we would like it to work. They could bring this question back up again and say, would you consider selling this to us, option one? Is that's, you know, that's, that's the out on this. If for some reason that we do want to retain ownership, I don't, I, I, you know, I don't see the advantage of it. But if we decided to get into option B, I think that's an option that we have. If, if Metro um, does want to um, own it at some point where the IGA is not working for them, um, then we'd be perhaps willing to sell it to them.
Yeah, I, and I will say that in conversations with, with Metro on other properties, uh, their investment in the Oregon City area has been uh substantial compared to uh, other communities in, in their service area. And so uh, as far as purchasing properties, as the, I've had a couple of properties come up where folks have contacted me to, to see if, you know, it might be an option for us to work with Metro to acquire. And Metro's let us know that uh, at this point, they were choosing to invest in other areas based on their, their substantial investment in the Oregon City area. So um, as far as them purchasing the property eventually, I don't know that, you know, things can change. But they, what they have told me recently is that they, they don't plan on purchasing any other uh property in uh, the Oregon City area.
They do plan on?
They do not at this time.
This is the one that they would want to?
Well, I mean, it's important to them. I, they've already gone through the master planning process and they're an important partner for Oregon City, uh, as you've noted at Kenema as well as uh, the one at Falls Legacy Project Site. And obviously at Newell Creek, you know, adjacent to the cemetery and providing the type of service that they do. Uh, we, we've had um residents that have uh inquired with staff recently about having off-road biking uh trails within Oregon City Parks and really wanting to invest and build uh off-road uh bike tracks through our parks. And it was uh fantastic for me to be able to tell them, well, we have this great new park, which will be opening up uh in, in our city, uh that will be a regional draw. And uh, you know, it's, it's set to break ground this year. So um, we see it as, as an asset and indeed to have Metro as such a good partner within our park system adjacent to our properties.
That master plan, which actually is going to be implemented this, uh, this coming year in terms of a piece of, the piece of trail that goes the other direction from the property we're talking about. It was a, was a great public process and um, a lot of input. And uh, they take that input into consideration. And one of the reasons that there are some dedicated bike trails going into there was that uh, public engagement. And um, if a motion, I, I will tell you that if a motion comes up to uh, to enter into an IGA, I probably will vote against it. I'd prefer to show that we respect that tremendous partnership we've had and to transfer the property. But uh, we don't have a motion yet.
Okay, so basically?
If I may, um, I, we have to have a unanimous vote tonight if, for anything, since there's only four of us, is that correct? Um, and based on the motion uh currently on the table, uh, I can promise you, we're not going to get a unanimous vote on this. So that being said?
You can what?
I, we're not going to get a unanimous vote on the motion that's on the table currently, which we have to finish. But my?
I have a second.
Right, we have to, that's what I'm saying, we have to finish. So my point is uh, I love what Metro does. I think they've done a great job. I agree. Great partner for Oregon City. They've done a great job. I mean, clearly they're, they do a great job with parks. It's what they do. It's what they know how to do. So I have, I think it's a great partnership. Uh, they also have given us two options to consider, uh, which tells me they may have a preference, but they're equally, uh, they, they're equally agreeable on both of these. And?
I'll, I'll tell you just the, the option that they prefer is the transfer of property.
No, that's what I'm saying. I'm sure they have a preference. Um, I, personally, I am against transferring the property to Metro uh for a couple of reasons. It's Oregon City's property. It's our park. It's our area. Um, and I think it goes a long way with the citizens of Oregon City when they don't see us giving away property and we're not giving away parks. Um, there's good reason, there could be good reason in this case to do that. However, try telling every single citizen that story uh and getting an accept, an acceptable reaction. Uh, I also think it does a lot of good to be able to say it's our park. Uh, even though we're not maintaining it, we're not, you know, if we do the IGA, we're not operating it, but it is Oregon City's park, because it's our property. Uh, we could craft that IGA to include possibly, uh, if they're, if they're agreeable, to retain the right to name that park, which we can then name it um, uh, something that, that makes sense for our Oregon City community. Uh, further maintaining our community feel that we want to have and, and not have it be something separate then from the rest of our network. So for a lot of those reasons, I would be more in favor of retaining ownership, but certainly entering into an IGA. Uh, they're great partners and I'd rather have them as a partner than just give it to them. And there's a, there's a good reason to have them as a partner. And not just say, here you go, go do what you want to do and we'll go do what we want to do.
Okay, and so I think at this point, it sounds like it's best to pick it up next meeting.
Well, but you have a motion on the table. We have to finish that motion.
There is no second.
Okay, so you're withdrawing your motion?
I don't have to. There's no second.
Do we call for a second?
For a lack of second.
Do we call?
I'll call for a second.
Okay.
A second, a second.
No, I don't do that.
Second motion. I think we should vote on that motion.
Okay.
You want to restate that motion one more time for us?
I have to read it off the board. Um, I move that the city retain ownership, enter into an IGA for Metro to maintain and operate city-owned property for park purposes.
Roll call.
Okay, so uh, roll call Daniels?
No.
Ballinger?
No.
Neely?
No.
Moore?
Hi.
Okay, somebody wants to bring forward the motion at the next meeting, they may do so. Again.
More people, I think that's advisable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do too.
All right, motion passes, uh fails, excuse me. I'm not used to, I'm not used to that. Okay, the update on the Willamette Falls Legacy Project.
Uh, so at this point, uh, no groundbreaking um information to, to really share. Uh, we have um, again, the RFP process for design work has, has closed and we are in negotiations with uh, the um selected firm. And hopefully we'll be announcing shortly uh intent to move forward with a, a firm for the design work for phase one um of the Riverwalk. Uh, groundbreaking for the property is still scheduled for April uh, on or before April of 2020.
Let me ask a question and I, I, people ask me and I make this, this statement. Uh, no, the process is going forward. Everything dealing with the property ownership has been dealt with. Uh, the back taxes have been paid and so there are no, there are none, there's nothing in terms of the property owner of the site that keeps us from going forward on this project. Is that true or am I a liar?
Uh, that, that is true. To my knowledge, he is uh, is current with his uh taxes and utility fees.
Okay. And uh, I, I've heard it probably would be about 2023 before the project's finished or is it shorter than that?
Uh, it's, I, I think they're looking at about a, a two-year um project window. So 2022, 2023, right in there.
Any other questions? Uh, that, there's no new information on that we can ask?
Hopefully we'll have an announcement very soon on uh, the design team.
And any other news that may come up.
Now we're coming up with movies in the park.
Okay, so um, in your um printouts in front of you, we have the movie in the park uh voting, which is planned to move forward very shortly. So uh, I believe it's uh planned to move forward next week. And um, all of the movies are uh, I believe PG or rated G in the selection. So no uh PG 13 movies this year. Um, they're scheduled for August 2nd, August 9th, August 16th and August 23rd. Uh, the locations have not been announced yet, but we are similar to last year, planning on rotating the locations uh to make sure that we're having events in all areas of our city.
How's that? How did that go? Have we have good attendance?
Yeah, it went really well. It was uh very well received. Um, we did receive some uh question or some um feedback on the restrooms at Chapin Park. Um, but that is uh one of our projects that we're hoping to uh complete before the summer. So we're hopefully going to replace the, the restroom, um, the restrooms at Chapin uh between now and then. So if Chapin is one of the park locations, uh similarly, we have uh not done a move in the park at uh Rivercrest previously, but uh we're in the thought process of, you know, connecting with the Neighborhood Association and seeing if that's something that they would support in us moving that as one of the locations this year.
Okay, um, I noticed a lot of these are very recent films.
Mm-hmm, some of them are still in the theater. She's supposed to have an in with them, Hollywood.
Yeah, so yeah, some new, some new films for sure coming out this year that uh will be very new releases.
So question on this, um, four movies per night to vote for. How was that decided? Was that a narrowing down of the votes or are those ones that were just selected by the staff to then put to vote?
Yeah, so there's the, there's a committee that uh puts together the um, the list of, of movies to be then narrowed down by the public for a, a public vote.
So they were, they will be narrowed down? They haven't been narrowed down to this point?
Yeah, so the, the four movies, uh, those are options for movies. The top vote getters for each of those evenings uh will be shown on those evenings. And so it will be determined over the next, I, I think it'll be open for six to eight weeks uh to the public to make a vote and then uh we'll, we'll make the announcement and start doing the, the marketing materials.
What about placing all 16 for vote as a group and just picking the top four? Because you might have, you know, you might have a winner for each of these, but the winner for one might be the sixth choice on the list.
Mm-hmm.
Just a thought. I mean, if they're going to pick them, they're going to, they're going to look at 16 movie titles. They're looking at how are you placing by date?
Right.
And I just think if you pick the top four, now you know you're getting the, you're really getting what the community wants to see.
Mm-hmm, that's a, a good suggestion.
And some of the voting, the other part of that is some of the voting will be based on their calendar. If they look in, they go, well, I'm not going to be around, so I don't care about that one, they do this one. Well, if we give them the top four, they might rearrange their schedule to be there if it's that important to them.
Mm-hmm.
Bring any more people in is my point.
And you got the same kind of process for naming parks and naming movies? That is, they, nobody can vote off the same system once, more than once?
Ooh, that's a good question.
That's true.
I believe so, yeah. So you have one vote per uh, well, per computer, per?
Device.
There's only four votes one way or the other.
Yeah, so you can, you can vote from your phone and your uh, your laptop if, if you so desire, I believe.
No, no, I understand that, but there are some, some degree of protection against somebody just voting 50 times.
Exactly, yeah.
I mean, I know these are movies and not parks. So, so it's, so it's not a significant however. It would be nice to have the voting for, to some extent, like we talked about before with the parks to Oregon City residents.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't know how you can track that too well, but again, it's just a park, it's just a movie.
Mm-hmm.
Not as big of a deal, but it'd be nice to keep it within the community.
Yeah.
Are there differences in what these cost?
Uh, they're all generally the same, the same price. There are some movies that are a little bit, a little bit more expensive than others.
You pay a life fee.
They're all, they're all generally just?
It's a little labor care and understanding.
They're maybe fifty dollars one way or the other.
Okay, because I noticed like the August 2nd one, those are all older. Because my guess is you're going to get the four most recent releases and?
I don't?
I wouldn't say so.
No, that, no, that has not always happened that way. I mean, uh, that is a?
And if you do, that's what they want.
Okay, let us know when the voting opens.
Yeah, we will, definitely.
Roy, you know the parents from pony for the kids.
Parents vote for what they want. Okay, so next.
Well, I appreciate this process. We had a, uh, a few years ago and uh, and I, I, I raised a concern that we had some PG 13s coming up. And uh, now they've restricted, I think, all to Gs and PGs, which is?
I think it's much better.
Yeah, that's, that idea. Okay, let's get on to vacant positions.
Okay, very good. What am I getting on?
Your agenda first of all.
Crack vacant positions, um. I, I, is there any reason we can't go ahead with the vote?
No, I want to move tonight.
I'd like a summary, like we talked about earlier about what, what we're up against here. Because it's been a little while.
Yeah, so we've um, uh, we've had a number of applicants submit. Uh, as we discussed at the last meeting, we had a couple of applicants that were ineligible based on uh, the bylaws stating that we may only have two representatives from any given neighborhood association. I did confer with our city attorney that um, that interpretation. I did confer with our city attorney that that interpretation is the city's interpretation, that they have to be from, regardless of being the Pioneer Center rep or a general member on this committee, that only two may be represented from any given neighborhood association. So Karen was gracious enough to volunteer to step in as the Pioneer Center rep, talking with Kathy Wiseman, the Pioneer Community Center supervisor, that it is difficult to find folks that are tied in with the Pioneer Community Center to represent the Pioneer Community Center. Karen has been an advocate for that building in the past and has, again, graciously stepped up and agreed to work closely with Kathy on providing that perspective and discussing the programs and offerings at that center with this group. We have three vacancies that opened up effective January 1. To this point, we've had two applicants submit applications and be interviewed that are available for recommendation and then appointment by the mayor. One of them was interviewed tonight, Jeff, and the other gentleman who we interviewed in December, and I am forgetting his name.
Derek Kugel.
Derek, thank you.
I'm looking at it here.
So those are our two representatives. Jeff does live outside of the Oregon City proper, outside of the urban growth boundary, and Derek is in the Caulfield Neighborhood Association.
Which one?
Caulfield.
Caulfield, yeah. And who do we have with Caulfield right now?
Nobody.
Nobody?
Currently, nobody.
Yeah, and outside the limits?
Nobody.
Currently, nobody.
Okay.
So I move that we recommend Derek Kugel and Jeffrey Sargent to the mayor for appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
I have some questions. We opened up the vote, the application process, and when did that close? Or did we extended it, rather, and then it closed when?
Yeah, it technically closed in October. And we opened it back up, and it is, is not closed. It's still, it's still open.
There's still one vacancy.
We still have one vacancy.
Right, so our, our plan was to leave it open until we fill it, essentially.
Till we fill the position.
And so, understanding what you're saying is, we have no other applicants that we have not yet interviewed, right?
Exactly, yes. And Sean has agreed to stay on as, as long as is needed to fill that ninth seat. He was unfortunately unable to make it tonight because of an anniversary and a prior commitment with his wife, which is understandable. But we will continue to advertise for the, the one vacancy and bring forward interview candidates as we have them.
I know we haven't gotten a lot of candidates, but I just wonder if it makes more sense, since we're looking for the best candidates, to wait till we get enough to vote on, because we, Karen, if I'm not gonna be allowed to speak, I'm really not sure why I'm not allowed. I mean, Robert's Rules of Orders, we also have kindergarten rules of orders. Don't speak, and this is your turn.
All right.
So I think it might make sense for us to wait until we have enough applicants, because although we're waiting on just one more in that time period, we could get two more. And now we've got four to fill three positions. So that's my, my thought.
What is the deadline? Are we just, we just advance it?
Yeah, so the deadline was in October. It's currently open.
I, I guess I disagree. We're, we're going into here, we'll be going into our second meeting without having a full board, and we won't even have it then. Particularly impressed with this applicant, but I was also impressed by the other applicant, and I would prefer to take action on it. And I guess it sure can make a second if nobody else is going to do it.
I think Troy has a good point, that first of all, I don't see a downside to having a seat not filled. It's not gonna make or break our discussions or probably our votes. I think it's better to try to look to get a couple of people to interview so that we can maybe make the best choice on a couple, instead of just taking the first one that, that applies and, and quote unquote qualifies to, to be part of the commission.
I don't, okay, so the reason I made the motion, which has now, again, not been seconded, they are both excellent.
I just seconded it.
Thank you. They are both excellent candidates. We are not, we do not have another application. It's time to get up to speed, fully personed. I was gonna say manned, that's not right. Let them, you know, we need to get them on board, let them start coming up to speed. We're looking at goals. We're moving ahead with projects. We owe it to ourselves to have a full board, and if that one application doesn't come in for six months, we have two excellent candidates that are going to lose interest.
I misunderstood, and I agree with what your point was and is, that we leave one vacancy open and not, and not, and proceed, and not fill that vacancy with just the next application.
Correct.
And the point, the point is, the people that have come to us have been interested in the position. Now, you can go try to recruit somebody else if you want to, but the point is, they, they haven't stepped up on their own to do so.
All my people I've recruited are from McLaughlin neighborhood.
You don't get out much, do you? You have to stay right there.
So, I mean, we had a deadline of October. We're, we're now through, through January, on our January meeting, and I just don't see the point of, of keeping it going in order to have more than three applicants for three positions.
Let the record show that I listen and can be persuaded. I agree.
Well, okay, in that case, we'll go out there and take the vote anyway. You call the roll?
Roll call Daniels.
Aye.
Volinter?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Maury?
Aye.
Okay, very good.
I'm kinda with my fervor today. We need to go back to the minutes.
Yeah, let's go back to the minutes. Have everybody had a chance to look through them. I did a short, gave it an overview. Didn't see anything stuck out to me.
I move they be approved as distributed.
Written. Approved as written.
Written, okay, that works.
I second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? Call the roll, please.
Daniels?
Aye.
Volinter?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Maury?
Aye.
And motion passes.
I will tell you that, you know, having accidentally quit in the long minutes is okay. I, I will not mention the committee, but there is one committee that the minutes, the last minute approval were those from April of last year.
And I did have one item to discuss on other general business. Sean, again, was unable to make it tonight, but wanted to discuss the youth representative or teen representative on, on Prac, and I did follow up with our city attorney, who said that we would need to make updates to our bylaws in order to add an additional representative that would serve on, on the group and have conversations and influence possibly the, the votes for this group. And so we can update the bylaws, if that's the wish of this group. We can look at, I can put together some language and come back to the next meeting with suggested details for, for updates, or if you have recommendations, I can probably send them out as a, as an email and get feedback before the next meeting, so that we can try to speed up the process a little bit.
I have an oddball question. Is there anything whatsoever in the charter and city ordinances, you name it, that sets a lower age limit for a committee member?
I am unaware of any language that would.
So couldn't that open position right now be recruited from the youth?
I would have to follow up.
Without designating it as such?
I'd have to follow up on that.
Okay.
You know, I had a similar thought, given the crossroads we're at right now.
They would be a voting member.
Well, I've been a voting member as a youth on, on adult boards, so.
Well, and I, I've had, I had similar thoughts just a minute ago, given the crossroads we're at, that maybe the language that we look at would be not adding a 10th position, but with the option that the ninth position could be a student representative with voting rights. And again, that, I think, might help us if we ever have a challenge in filling that position because of the age, you know, being a youth, it would then allow us, without changing the bylaws, to make that an adult position if, if we needed to. Maybe we could word it something where it's preference.
The flex position.
Preference to the student position. So it doesn't give us the choice of just making them one of the candidates that we pick, or the applicants, but rather, that would be the preference, and then if that's not, if that's not available, nobody applies, nobody wants it, then as a second choice, we can go to another adult member. Maybe make them an at-large member that doesn't have, it's not part of the Neighborhood Association or something. The outside the limits kind of a thing. Anyway, just a thought. Give us some flexibility on that, not to change the bylaws again.
So I'll, I'll try to put together some language and send out an email to the group for consideration, and you can respond back, and hopefully we'll have some information to share at the next meeting.
That's probably under other general business. Is there any other, other general business?
Well, Pioneer Center is not a standing report. Is that part of member reports?
Yes.
Okay.
And now, member reports.
Speaking of which.
Bill?
I have none, other than I did, I did attend the Oregon City Parks Foundation meeting last night. Phil was in attendance as well, and they were going through their goals for, for the coming year. And it was a nice group participation with some good ideas for what their, what their mission statement is about. Jerry Herman came and presented a nice piece of information, and he's willing to help bring in the different kinds of people that are necessary, perhaps should I say, that have either contacts or certainly willingness to help raise money for that foundation, get people out to support it.
I have nothing.
Do you? You have anything to report?
Yes.
I'm ready.
Okay, the, in your handouts, there's an extra handout, and I had a lovely, long meeting with Kathy. What we had, what we decided was each month, I'm gonna go a little deeper into something about Pioneer Center, rather than just kind of this, that, and whatever. So for this month, we picked actual trackable statistics, and this shows you, and some of it I had to translate for myself. This is participation in the transportation project, meals on wheels, congregate dining, center services, recreation, and meetings and rentals, and center services is anything. These numbers, which add up to that 125,797 service units, these are people that are in, receiving trackable services. So if you go in, say you sign up for Meals on Wheels, you fill a form out, because each of these services is backed by multiple funding sources, and there's different reporting that's required. If it's county money, it's federal money, it's whoever's money. So her bookkeeping is quite interesting. Those numbers actually only account for trackable units. This doesn't count everybody else who walks in. So if you walk in to play pool, if you come in to take part in, have a meeting or something, and one, one of the things she had commented on was that she was proud of herself, because the carpet that they put in was only supposed to last for five years, and she's going on eight. And then she handed me these numbers, and I said, wait a minute, look at all those feet that have been on that carpet that you're managing to maintain. So we gotta be proud of her over the carpet. But, you know, these are big numbers, and you're talking about a staff of three, and a lot of bookkeeping. So welcome to the numbers, and next month, we will be discussing taxes.
Very good. I'm just curious, could you, could you work with her to provide, say, a 10-year, a 10-year listing, and just see how things have grown, or?
I would think she could pull, have somebody pull it out.
Just on the tolls, that'd be great.
And just one other little tiny side thing. I have huge thank yous to the cemetery staff. In December, I discovered that there's a young man buried there who was an orphan raised in Minnesota. He joined the Marine Corps when he turned 18, was sent to Mare Island in California, served his two years in the Marine Corps in California, met two brothers from Oregon City. So when they were all discharged, he came to Oregon City with them, got a job at the paper mill, moved in with a coworker on a houseboat, and three months after he moved here, fell off the houseboat and drowned. Never married, you know, he's an orphan, he's never been married, he's a military veteran, and he has no headstone. And so we found that there is a way to apply to the VA for a headstone. On their form, it says you can do it as a cemetery, but as soon as we did it as a cemetery, they came back and said, well, no, it has to be family. So Deborah, thank goodness, said it in enough ways. He's an orphan. He was raised in an orphanage. We're still not guaranteed that we're gonna get it, but the VA is still working on it, and I basically had said, oh, all I want for Christmas is a headstone for this guy. So she is trying to grant my Christmas wish, and it's taking a little more effort than I thought it was gonna take, but she's right on top of it.
That's great. Great that you're able to do that. I hope you're successful. That's wonderful. I'm going to be talking to, I'm going to be talking to Phil about the process that we've used in terms of naming parks. The Radiorian City Watershed Council is taking on the, getting names on our, some of our unnamed streams that pass through, under our, under our arterials and collectors in the city. We have put signs, we've got 13 signs on, on stream crossings. If they're named, they have the name. If they're not, if they don't have the formal name recognized, a recognized formal name, we refer to it as a stream crossing. We're gonna have probably six of those unnamed streams, and we're going to try to go through a process of getting them named. Turns out, it's not that hard use of a process. We've talked to a couple members of the board that actually recommends names to the state, and they told us basically what the process is. We've got a lot of streams that have names, but they're not formal ones. Ice Cold Creek is not a formal name, for example. Red Soils Creek is not a formal name. They are not formally named creeks. And so we're gonna through a process. We'd like to make it as a public process as we can. We found some of the restrictions. It's not a requirement, but it is suggested that we, running names, we come through, through the, through a tribe, and this is a set of territories of the Confederate tribes of the Brand Ron. We can do that process, and we got suggested names of people to talk to there when we get further into the system. And so we're, we're shooting to get the six unnamed streams named. There's a lot more streams than that. We're just looking at the ones that, that are visible from an archery or a collector. There's several that are piped through that area. I've learned a lot in that process, the tracing back to streams. We mentioned Singer Park, excuse me, no, Kathy.
Tarran's Woods, or Singer Hill, Singer Creek Park? Filberon?
On the, I went off of Kathy Lake, Hilldale, yeah. Hilldale Park, the stream running through there is Mud Creek.
Mud Creek, yeah.
And I was not aware of that before until we looked at these maps. A lot of people will be giving various names, but this is a, this is a creek that we in fact have a name on, where Mud Creek. fact have a name on, where Mud Creek, uh, passes, uh, on, on Myers Road down into the canyon there. Uh, so it's a process that we're, uh, working on, and I'm looking forward to having discussion with Phil how we could best do this. We're not doing this as a city undertaking specifically, but we'll be informing the commission and so forth as we process, go through this process. Okay, so that's my report. Anything else for the good work? Oh, no, yeah, staff.
Oh, yeah.
Staff report.
Uh, so the recreation report, um, I believe you got from Denise, but I was looking back, and I wasn't sure if you received that or not.
Yeah, I think we did.
Okay. If not, we will get it to you. She's back next week, and we'll make sure that we send it your way. Um, the, uh, city commission retreat is scheduled for February first and second. Uh, Community Services will be presenting on Friday evening, so that is a public meeting, and you're more than welcome to attend. Uh, there's also, uh, public comment periods, uh, throughout both Friday and Saturday if you'd like to give comment.
And it's where?
Uh, it will be located at the Willamette, uh, the, the Providence Community Center on, um...
Washington.
Washington Street, yeah. So it's, uh, Friday evening beginning at four, and Saturday, uh, most of the day, I believe, beginning at nine. Uh, but it's publicly posted on our website for additional information. Uh, Charter Park update, so the city commission will be receiving a, uh, Charter Park update similar to the one that we received today. In addition to the information that we have today, I'll probably include a couple of additional slides of properties that have not been, um, that are not necessarily parks but are park-owned, maintained, so, uh, looking at, uh, the Trailhead or, uh, the Clackamas River Trail, um, looking at another couple of properties that, uh, we maintain that have not been designated as parks to date, or that might not necessarily have the same type of, uh, public impact that some of our actual parks have, so, um, not a lot of new information, but definitely it would be great to have folks from this group there, and it's, uh, again, open to the public. We'll be making that, um, presentation during a work session in February, so the second Tuesday in February, and I, uh, did not write down the date, but it'll be the second Tuesday. Um, and that is, uh, all the items I have for staff reports.
Um, it might be interesting to send everybody the ordinances if they haven't seen them. Barbara's doing a wonderful job on writing those and researching the different parks.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause it's like, we, when we vote on them here, we just kinda know where they are, and...
Yeah.
They were on our drive by, but she's doing a really good job of explaining why it's a park and why it should be a charter park.
Okay, yeah, I can forward the ordinance to the group.
And I already have them, so...
Future agenda items. I've got one for maybe discussion. Um, we've gone through the park naming there, uh, Tarone Park, and, uh, we had a, you know, one name that was there that was also a veteran of World War One, died in France, and I was thinking, since we're gonna be, if he gets some kind of recognition, and I was thinking, maybe that park, uh, we're going to, I presume, be working on that wetland area, and whether we would want to perhaps give that kind of recognition. He's, he's a, he's a, he's, uh, descendant of the Coffield family. The Coffield, uh, I was looking at maps of the, uh, donation land claims, it's, it's not located there, but it's very, very close to there where the Coffield donation land claim is, but to give that a kind of recognition to a World War One veteran, and, and perhaps a, just a simple naming of a wetland, if, if we could have that as a future, uh, discussion item.
Yeah, 'cause I've got some ideas for him, too.
Okay.
I had an agenda item I'd like to ask about is, um, since we're going to be approached by the community in different parks about pathway lighting, and obviously we have a, a budget issue already, but I'd like to, once again, maybe review, especially for new members that come aboard, on the possibility of using SDC money for parks that have never had lighting in it, if that's an option that the, maybe the community would support, using SDC money for pathway lightings, as opposed to always using it for procurement of property.
Good idea.
And the other, the other one that I was wanting to find out about more was, are we any closer to Clackamas Park, uh, master planning? Um, I know I bring that up each time, but I know that your plate is always full, but I didn't know if there was budget available to hire...
It was my intent to have it out, uh, this last week, and that did not happen, but, uh, I'm, within the next week or, or so, I'm very, very hopeful that it will get out. And, um, so originally, we were planning on doing a, a formal RFP process for the park, um, but I, I think at this point, we're probably just gonna do a, uh, you know, a shoulder tap and, uh, intent to, to issue on, uh, a, um, uh, with some professional consulting firms for that, so, it, it's under the threshold where we don't have to do a formal RFP process, so, uh, we'll probably get that, that information out, uh, very shortly, and then, uh, I'm envisioning at the next meeting, I'll be able to, to come with some additional information.
Sounds like one of our new applicants might be very helpful in that.
It'll take.
I, I, I'm already tapping him for something.
So is there anything else for the good order? Hearing none?